It is the appointed time of 5:30 PM. Let's start our Tuesday, November 24th meeting, Committee of the Whole Meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Felgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
He's here.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly. Alderman Donlin.
Present.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, a quorum is present.
Fantastic, thank you. Do we have approval of the Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 Committee meeting minutes?
A move, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, presentations. I think Chief Reine would like to come up and take his last bow and give us a little update.
About a last bow, but just to give you an update, the Fire Department is looking better as far as we're down to, I believe, 11. I believe we're down to 11 that are either quarantined or positive. Most of our quarantine have been due to family members not exposure on the job, so that's good. And I believe we have three or four that are returning this week. We are working out a deal with UIS to begin surveillance testing of our firefighters, similar to what they're doing in Champaign. Champaign's lucky enough to have the University of Illinois in their backyard, and we're lucky enough to have the University of Illinois Springfield in ours. So we've reached out to them, and we're going to begin surveillance testing of our firefighters, which should help identify which, the ones that are, in my opinion, the most dangerous, and that are the firefighters that are walking around with it that have no symptoms. And we've had probably five positives in the last month that never had any symptoms. They would not have known they had it but for the fact that we sent them to get tested because they happened to be exposed to somebody. So that's really what we're trying to stop. You know, for a while there, it was like herding cats. It's gotten a little bit better. The bottom line is, we want to make sure our people are safe and that they're able to do the job, and I think we're getting there very soon.
Fantastic. Anyone have any questions for the chief? Wait, chief, wait, 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 wait. Any questions for the chief?
Chief, Madam Chair, this is McMiniman.
Yes.
Chief, do you know how we're doing with SPD and any quarantine and positives at SPD?
I believe they have some. I don't think their numbers were as bad as ours ever, but they've had their hills and valleys too, and I don't have an exact number.
Thank you.
And chief, on behalf of all of us, under different circumstances, we would, I'm sure, be presenting you a plaque or something equally cool.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure working with you. I think I can speak for everyone. So don't be a stranger, stay in touch, and best of luck to you moving forward.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Good job, chief.
All right, ordinances tabled or remaining in committee?
2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-067, 2020-153, 2020-207, 2020-273, 2020-314, 2020-315, 2020-330, 2020-331, 2020-332, 2020-333, 2020-346, 2020-378, 2020-379, 2020-380, 2020-404, 2020-406, 2020-438, 2020-442, 2020-464.
Any action on any of those ordinances? No? All right, moving forward to CWLP.
2020-475, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 21-09-35, furnished in delivery, diabate basic acid, three years with chemtreat incorporated, an amount not to exceed $354,354 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent. Madam Chair, second.
So we have Alderman Hanauer move to consent, and Alderman Donlin seconded.
Yes.
Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
2020-480, an ordinance proposing a COVID relief CWLP Small Business Assistance Program using an environmental and regulatory initiatives and rebate fund ERIRF and a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $500,000 for the City of Springfield Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent. Second, McMiniman.
We have some discussion, it looks like.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, Doug, have we seen an increase of need on payments on utilities? Or I know we had talked about this in September a little bit, when we was shutting folks off. Have we been seeing more people make payment arrangements and things to take advantage of the assistance that we have?
Yeah, we've seen an increase in that. The, I don't have the exact numbers, but we have seen an increase in the people that are signing up for our payment plans. And we've actually seen an increase in some of the people that are actually paying their bills too. So, you know, it's kind of their choice. If they want to, if they have the funds and they want to do that, that's fine by us. But we, you know, we're also trying to get them also signed up for the different financial aid packages that are out there for our customers as well.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Alderwoman Turner.
So is this only, I'm looking at the explanation, is this only for, are these funds only available for small businesses?
Well, basically, the definitions are, if they're in a rate class of 40, 40, 42, and 46, with a peak demand of less than 100 KW. So what that allows is that, that really generally characterizes as more of a small business type, you know, companies that are out there, that are our commercial customers.
The reason why I was asking is because, is it possible that we could divert some of these funds? I saw where the Roundup program, they were accepting applications for that starting December 1st. So is it possible for us to look at what's available in that fund and then divert some of these, some of this money to that fund as well? Because I think that we still have, don't misunderstand me, please, nobody, I think that we should do everything that we can for our small businesses. I, 100% in favor of this, of this program. However, I do think that we do still have some residential entities that are out there that still need assistance, and I'm not sure that, given the circumstances right now and how this pandemic is lingering on, I'm not sure that the funds that are available in the Roundup program are going to be enough to put a dent in those that are going to be seeking assistance. So if there's any way possible that we can divert some of this, some of these funds to that program, I think that it would be very beneficial.
Madam Chair, McMiniman.
Can I have an answer to my question first before anybody else speaks?
Yeah, I could speak to Jim Langfelder. There's two options. One, they currently go through, and Doug can explain that, through the LIHEAP program, through Capital Township. I know they have funds, and then the state offers residential assistance. So there's assistance through residents out there. But if, I guess my, if you want to go that route, there's $23 million in the fund. I think we should just prepare a separate ordinance if we want to go that route for residents. But right now, they have alternative funding options. That's why we went with the business one on this one. But there's plenty of funds, you know, associated with doing a piece, if that's the pleasure of the council, to do for residents as well.
Yeah, I was going to address the same point when I asked to speak, because I'm on the same issue. So what I wanted to say was that-
Can I, may I finish, please?
Yes, Alderwoman Turner, you're talking.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Langfelder, for that information. I would ask that Corporation Council prepare a companion ordinance that would provide funding for residential customers. And I can, and I would be happy to have a conversation with the mayor and Corporation Council to determine an amount.
So another small business. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Is this the environmental fund that we set up a while back that's, that we're trying to save for the, for like the ash pond disposals and all that?
That's correct, yes. So any environmental projects that we have coming, which they're substantial, would be coming out of this fund.
I thought that we had some pretty strict guidelines on that, much like we did with Fund 95. I'm not trying to keep money from people, but, and from businesses, but, you know, we've got a pretty hefty bill coming on this, on this ash pond, and I just, I didn't think we could use this for anything like, other than environmental purposes.
It was actually, when it was created, it, it was designed to, the council added, I guess you'd say the term rebate, to the title and the description, so that way the council could choose to rebate money in that fund to our customers if they so desire.
Because, I mean, I just, I don't want to start down this rabbit hole to where we start dipping into this fun for every little thing. So, you know, the whole purpose of it is to look at the ash ponds and other environmental cleanups that we have, that we're going to be required to do, and we know we're going to be required to do, so we don't have to increase our, our, our electric rates to cover it, and thus hurting everybody in the community. Again, I'm not against getting, finding, you know, ways to help people and businesses out, but I'm just concerned, much like we, we try to stay away from it with the Fund 95, it's kind of the same, same issue. So I just thought I'd bring that up.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes, and my two attempts to talk were addressing Alderman Turner's question regarding what programs we have for residential customers. I believe that the winter shut-off prevention state law applies to residential customers, but not to business customers. I believe that's something to take into consideration. So we've got business customers that cannot receive the benefit that residential customers receive against utility shut-offs during the wintertime. Then also, we also have the City WLP Bill Assistance Program, which I think is derived from the Roundup money, from when customers pay their utility bills and Roundup. And I believe we've just issued a, a press release on that program.
Yes.
That's available to residential customers. So I just wanted to add that information in answer to Alderman Turner's good question. Thank you.
Let me just follow up too with increasing, trying to increase a large pool of money towards, for just residential-type customers. I got to make sure logistically that we can actually do that, just because, you know, what we're doing here is going to help probably about 250 businesses. Could be a little bit more than that, depending upon, you know, their, what their needs are. So it's a much smaller amount of paperwork essentially for the staff to handle. A lot of the others, the other programs that are out there, we're not the ones that decide that, how they're administered. So we might have to, you know, actually work with another agency to, to go through and approve of who gets the funding, you know, for a new program that's created for residential.
Alderman Redpath, did you have anything to say, to add?
Yes. So the ash pond cleanup, what is the cost of that now? We were told it was $20 to $30 million. What is the cost of that?
Well, we don't know that yet. That could vary depending upon what we're required to do. The rules for the federal laws are pretty much set, but Illinois is not. They're still working through that with the Illinois Climate Control Board. So, you know, we don't really know for sure exactly what the costs are. If we, you know, it's one thing to close the ponds with ash in place. It's another cost entirely to where, you know, if we had to remove the ash, or a portion of the ash, those costs would be much more substantial than a $20 or $30 million cost.
Yes, I said it on several of those meetings. I understand where you're coming with that. So this program here is basically going to give utility holiday type of thing for these people, as a rebate? How's this going to work?
Well, essentially, this, this $500,000 basically allows for an entity to basically demonstrate that they've been impacted, of course, from COVID. So comparing their revenues from, you know, over a period from last, the previous year to this year, we'd be able to see that. And then they would be able to claim up to $2,000 of, basically equal to 50% of their electric balance. So this is an electric fund that's covering this, so it's only applicable to their electric account with us. Does this make sense?
Yes. So I was planning to come tonight with a proposal to, to ask the mayor to look into a utility holiday for at least a one-month period for the industry that has hit the hardest on this, the restaurants and the bars. Is that, is that, would that be contradictory to what this ordinance is doing?
Well, like a holiday, I guess I don't know what the, how broad you're going to apply that.
Basically, giving them a free month of utilities in order to try to help get caught back up. Some of these people are paying upwards of $5,000 a month through utilities.
Well, we have to look at the impact for that. I don't have that kind of fiscal information with me. This is, you know, capped at $500,000, so we kind of know what the impact is.
I'm not worried where the money's coming from. I'm just saying, it's, if the mayor would go along with the proposal, then I think the city council's going to look at where we can find the money to do that type of thing. These folks are, these folks are devastated, and we all know it. I know all 10 Aldermen support trying to help those folks because they've been put out. You know, there's been conversations at, at the city council about, about the pandemic and how it's impacted. I've been counseled by people I trust in the medical field. I believe that, I believe the numbers. I believe that we're, we're, we're going the wrong direction, and hopefully it's going to turn around. So in order to try to reopen those people any quicker than we possibly can, we got to find different ways to try to help them. I think one of the ways we can do it is, I thought about, thought about maybe taking some fund balance and distributing that to the bar and restaurant to try to help them out. But it probably makes more sense if we help them along the utility side, because utilities are, they just keep coming, no matter what's going on, and it's going to devastate them to the point where they're not going to be able to recover. So I would like for you to look at that. I would like the mayor to look at it, and I encourage any of the council members that heard what my proposal was, that we all get together and try to figure out a way to make that work. Thank you.
Actually, Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes.
Within this proposal or the program, it's a six-month smoothing of their bill too. So that comes along with that. But Corporation Council will have to speak to the technicalities of, you know, skipping a payment, or I, you know, I think that's why we built in the six months to someone's behind, that they could smooth it out over a six-month period or prolonged period.
I think we're all looking at this the same direction, Mayor. We're, we might be going different ways around the barn. But I know the council, I'm not trying to speak for the rest of the council, but I know we all want to try to help everybody we can, and that's just one proposal that I'd like to, for you to consider.
And we just, Corporation Council, I think we just made, make sure that we take a look at the electric bonds as well, to make sure that we don't violate any bond covenants.
And Alderman, I think it'd be fine. We can look at that to see how we could, there are certain rules Doug is referring to. We can look at the, as Alderman, Alderwoman Turner asked about the residence, you know, residential part.
Right.
We'll look at that, just to give some parameters perhaps. And then also, we can take a look at some kind of a holiday. This particular program was one that the mayor had identified from actually some other utilities, one that's easily adaptable. Doug came up with the logistics that they felt that they could target, the ones hardest hit. But we can certainly go back and take a look at both of those options about residential, and also some kind of a better, maybe a holiday, although we can't technically give free power, we can give credits, which is what this is proposing.
Okay.
We can look into that.
Anything we can do.
Certainly.
Thank you.
We can be happy to look into it.
And it might be, Alderman, that, you know, that if you choose to increase the amount, you know, from $500,000 to a million, you know, I mean, that could be, that's another alternative for doing what you're trying to accomplish.
And as far as the money's concerned, I think we need to talk about that. We don't need to talk about it right now, but we need to talk about that.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion from Alderman Redpath and a second from Alderman McMiniman for consent. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Madam Chair, if I can interject, do we need to put this on debate if there's going to be a possible proposal change to it?
I would say that it would be, whatever your pleasure is, because the, both of those other alternatives would be actually probably separate ordinances. But we'll have something by, by the next council meeting. We'll try to have a report back to you, or information back to you on both of those.
I'll stand by my motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so this goes on consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Public Safety, 2020-466, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA assistance to the firefighter's grant COVID-19 supplemental number EMW-2020-FG-01455 in the amount of $66,796.01, with matching funds in the amount of $6,679.60, for a total grant amount of $66,796.01, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of said grant funds in the amount of $73,475.61 to the purchase personal property protective equipment for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
General City Business, 2020-469, an ordinance amending ordinance 054-02-2020, which established the PACE area and a PACE program to finance the acquisition and construction of emergency, or I'm sorry, energy projects.
Move for consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second for consent. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Explanation.
May I, may I address the issue, just briefly?
Absolutely.
Sorry. You may recall that the city, along with several, a few other cities, had, after the state law was changed, allowing for PACE financing, which is just a method of trying to finance renovation of basically commercial projects. And what happened was, when we passed the original ordinance, there was a follow-on piece of legislation to streamline the process. And so this, this amendment, or these changes are just to, to make sure we're consistent with the new law that was passed as the follow-on. And so this has not yet been utilized, but it's just a tool for a private developer to use where they can help finance energy efficiency projects, like windows and different things to buildings and so on, to help them be able to finance the renovation. However, it involves no tax dollars or anything of that nature. It's strictly from savings, from energy savings within the individual project. So this is a technical amendment that is to comply with the new statute that was passed to, from the original PACE state law. And they did that in order to try to simplify this at the request of the, the state bond agency that was issuing the PACE bonds. So it is a technical amendment to comply with state law.
Thank you.
Apologize for that long, apologize for that long explanation, but I'm sorry.
That's okay. Anyone else have any questions about this? Do we have a motion?
You do, Madam Chair. You had a motion and a second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
2020-470, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class C local licenses by one and increase the number of Class B local licenses by one for Max Convenience Stores LLC, doing business as Circle K 4701411, located in 1901 West Jefferson.
Move for consent. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Present.
2020-471, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by one for Coffee and Fields Incorporated, doing business as Liminary Kitchen, and Provision located at 3121 Headley Road, Suites D and E.
Move for consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Present.
Noted.
Motion carries.
2020-472, an ordinance declaring 10 unclaimed bicycles being held in the Springfield Police Department's evidence room to be surf house property, and authorizing the Springfield Police Department to donate said bicycles to the Springfield School District 186 and Rutley's Youth Foundation.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2020-473, an ordinance authorizing payment of $31,752.39 to John Fisher, an officer of public utilities employee, to settle a workman's compensation claim for case number
Move for consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
2020-474, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $69,181 to Jared Kelly, a City of Springfield firefighter, for settlement of workman's compensation claim for case number 18-WC-6404.
Move for consent. Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2020-476, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase and sale of real estate with Brandy Tully and Ronald Scott Tully, in an amount not to exceed $102,000, and closing costs in the amount of $1,500, for a total amount not to exceed $103,500 for property located at 2331 South Sixth Street.
Move for consent.
Move for consent. Is there any discussion on this? I just want to say thank you to everyone for putting up with me for the last few months on, on this issue. I appreciate it. I appreciate Public Works and Hanson for getting this done. done and the next one. But there is still some work to do on some of these houses, so along the corridor. So there's going to be some other things coming forward. But thank you, everyone, for all your work on this. I appreciate it. So we have a motion for consent and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2020-477, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in an amount of $8,000 for personal property located at 2331 South Sixth Street.
Move for consent?
Consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
2020-478, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for purchase and sale of real estate with Neil A. Davis, in an amount not to exceed $88,000, and closing costs in the amount of $1,500, and for a total amount not to exceed $89,500 for property located at 2408 South Fifth Street.
Move for consent?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2020-479, an ordinance authorizing relocation expenses in the amount of $5,000 for personal property located at 2408 South Fifth Street.
Move for consent?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That is it for our regular agenda. Do we have any unfinished business that anyone would like to discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderwoman Turner?
I have two things. Number one, I want to give a thank you to Val and her staff. I heard from a number of businesses that were making application for the COVID relief, and they, all of them mentioned how helpful Val's staff was and how they returned calls and really helped them through the process. So thank you, Val and your staff. And then the other thing, I have a question for Corporation Counsel. Can you tell me what's going on with Popular Place? It's really a mess over there now. I know that there was some, last you and I talked, there was a holdup with the sale. But it's just really bad over there now. I know that most of the apartments are vacant, but the doors are open, hanging off. People are just kind of hanging in, hanging out over there. And then along Old Rochester Road, there's a significant amount of fly dumping. I mean, it stretches from 23rd Street all the way down to where it, you know, comes into South Grand. So it's a real mess over there right now.
Yep. Yes, ma'am. I was going to, just very quickly, you may recall that the city had entered into a redevelopment agreement with a new potential purchaser.
Right.
The property is currently owned by Related Midwest. What has happened is the agreement was, their agreement, Midwest with the new purchaser, was contingent on being able to get tax credits. The original determination for the tax credits has had a difficult, or has had a difficulty arise because of the, from the state on eligibility, having to do with, it's very technical, but a 15 versus a 30-year lockout period in order to do demolition. That's being worked on, but it has proven to be very, very complicated. That has included, I know the both Related and the new potential buyer, having to go all the way to Washington to the IRS, trying to get a ruling from the IRS. There are two alternative financing options that are now being looked at. However, in the event, there's already been a discussion with Related that in the event that the tax issue does not get resolved, the tax credit issue does not get resolved, then it's going to be back on them to make all of the necessary repairs. And so it has taken six or nine months longer than they originally thought to get the tax credits nailed down. It is still up in the air. However, they are looking at two options, and they'd indicated they thought probably we would know for sure if that was realistic. Probably, I believe they said in January. Is that not correct, Mayor? I think it was in January. And there have been multiple discussions. And I'll be happy to give you some more information on it, but it all turns on the financing because of the tax credits.
Okay, so are you saying that we should know something, have some resolution by January?
That is our understanding. We have talked to both Related Midwest, the tax credit individuals from the state, and multiple times with the buyer. And it is our understanding that they're, the state has indicated they're going to try to find a couple of different potential alternatives. But
Okay.
It's turning on the eligibility to the tax credits. However, I think the mayor has indicated that the plan was to go ahead and do news, a set of inspections, so that we have the latest information in relation to Midwest if we have to go back after them. There is an order in the court now ordering them to make all repairs. However,
Okay.
That got set aside when the development agreement got done.
Right. So in the interim, is there, I mean, is there something we can do about, you know, just the basic cleanup over there and, you know, just
I think we can send
Because, you know, the problem is that, you know, I don't want to rehash this because everybody knows the situation. The problem is that you have Popular Place that's sitting right in the middle of a very nice middle-income residential neighborhood. And, you know, just with the way that things are there right now, it's just really having a negative impact on the entire neighborhood. When the sale, when they were talking about the sale going through, they had made some significant changes, and it was really moving in the right direction. But it seems like now that all of that's been put on hold, you know, we're back to the neglect and just things going totally downhill. So if there's something that we can do to, you know, kind of push the envelope on that, that would be great. Now, the fly dumping issue on Old Rochester Road, I know that the management of Popular Place is going to say that's not, you know, their problem. However, I will tell you that most of it is because of Popular Place. But is, what can we do to get that cleaned up? I mean, if anybody has driven down Old Rochester Road lately, you know what I'm talking about. It's just horrible. It seems like every, I go down that street often, and because the light at South Grand and Wheeler is last for 10 minutes. But anyway, that's another issue I'll talk to Doug about, talk to Doug about. But it seems like every time I go down that, down Old Rochester Road, there's two more bags that are just kind of laying out there. So if there's anything that we can do to address that issue, that would be great, too.
And we can, the mayor had already asked, but we can make sure that we get new inspections done over the whole property. And we can press forward in terms of finding out what the plan is from Related, if the other thing falls through. Right now, Related had offered very briefly to give the property free to the new people. The new people were fine basically with doing that, subject to being able to get the tax credits, and that's where the rub had started.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If I may, Madam Chair, add to that?
Yes, of course.
Yep. One is we'll have Public Works go over there and pick up the fly dumping, and hopefully they'll be able to determine who's doing it, if they left any type of evidence. The other thing with the Popular Place, we will go do the inspections to put the pressure on Related, because this got caught up in the, you know, it's a back and forth of the tax issue associated with the project itself. It's been there for, well, about 40 years, hasn't it? I think 40 years?
Yeah.
And so it's the guidelines they used back then that they deem still intact. And so we've discussed with them the unit-for-unit options, because that's what they say you have to do, a reduced amount. And so that's what they're trying to figure out, how to make that work with Illinois Housing Development Authority. And so Related has other projects with the Illinois Housing Development Authority, so that's why it's crucial to go in there, do the inspections. If we need to, go back to court, because that's how we got to this place and time. And we just don't want to let it linger any longer, because, you know, tax credits are issued each year. We want to make sure the Popular Place, once that they did award, still stay intact. And if they need to improve the project itself or reform it or reshape it, Related has some skin in the game to make that happen with the developers that we're all trying to work with. So it's not necessarily the developers' fault that has taken on this project. As you've seen, they did one unit, which everybody likes. But it's a matter of this technicality, that it's kind of, you know, it's an obstacle that we don't need at this point in time, and we need to make sure that Related steps up to the plate if need be.
Yeah, and I do want to say that I do have to give a lot of credit to the mayor and Corporation Counsel Zirkel, because they have been working with me very diligently on doing something to address Popular Place for probably five or six years. It's ever since Mayor Langfelder came into office. So I do want to say, you know, that they have really been working on this and putting a lot of attention to it. And I would just, and we're so close. We thought we were, we thought we were there, and I just don't want to see us regress and, you know, go back to where we were when we first started down this road.
Agreed.
Alderman Hanauer, did you have something?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Couple things. Today, we had the ribbon cutting for Archer Elevator Road, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Nate and his staff and for putting up with me. And, you know, it is a welcome addition out here on the west side. And thank Mayor Langfelder's niece for pushing it from her end. It's good to have family that wants it, too. So that helped. But I wanted to mention that. And then last week, I had mentioned about my concern about Black Friday. And I've had a chance to talk to bar and restaurant owners, and they're watching. They're watching very, very intently to see what happens on Black Friday, because if it's crazy out, we're going to have some explaining to do. And I realize people have to wear masks, all that stuff, but it's still not right. We're letting the big-box stores get away with murder, and we're hitting the little guy for jaywalking. And, you know, I happen, the bars are getting, some of the restaurants, I don't know if people are trying to, are calling them in, but they're getting, health inspectors coming by multiple times a week. It's almost borderline of harassment. So I'm just, I'm just letting you know that I think it's, that without us putting something out, we're, it's not fair to one set when we're going to allow another group to just go crazy. So, you know, and as Alderman Redpath mentioned earlier, these guys are really hurting. The rules seem to change in the middle of things. A lot of them rented tents. Now they can't, they can only put two sides up on their tents. Well, nobody's going to want to spend, you know, spend time in a tent when it's 30 below, or 30 degrees outside and sleeting. So they've spent money on this. We've got to, we've got to be consistent on what we're doing. And like everyone else, I'm concerned about the numbers going up. And, but, and the other part is, in a few weeks, when numbers aren't going up, and we've shut the restaurants down, we're going to have to explain to them why shutting them down didn't help the numbers. So I'm not going to elaborate on this, except I'm very concerned about what's going to happen on Friday. Because, yeah, people may not be eating Thanksgiving dinner with all their family, but they're going to go shopping, and it's going to be crazy. And I predict it. I just think we're going to have some, a lot, some explaining to do to the bars and restaurants.
Alderwoman Turner, did you have anything to say?
No, I just wanted to say to Alderman Hanauer's comment, I do believe that we should be very consistent in how we are, how we are holding everyone accountable. And I will say that I was out on Sunday, and there were a number of stores that had lines waiting to go in, because they were, they did have people at the door counting to see how many people were coming in and how many people were going out. So I think that they are trying to be responsible and make sure that they are adhering to the guidelines on the number of people that can be in the store. I would tell you that we, I had my, two of my grandkids, and we passed up on several stores that they wanted to go to because I wasn't ready to stand in line. So it is, so it is happening. People are paying attention and trying to adhere to.
It might have happened last week, Doris, but is it going to happen on Good Friday, their biggest shopping day of the, you know, that's my concern.
No, and I, and I actually agree with you, Ralph. I think that we have to be consistent. I think that that's, that if we're, if we're going to have any credibility with what we're doing, we have to be consistent.
Anyone else on this?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
With regards to that, I think everybody shares your frustration of restaurants, bars. That's why we went from the 50% to the 25% capacity, because when the governor first had mitigation plans, that was the plan of action. But they went 50 to 0%. Lo and behold, the, you know, the county, Sangamon County Public Health, put the 12% positivity rate on, as the bar, if it went above that. So that's why it was shortened a week, because of that action, they hold the food licenses. The frustrating part, I don't know if anybody watched the news or read the newspaper on, about the announcement of Menard County. Well, Menard County, Sangamon County provides public health services to Menard County. Sangamon County and Menard County are MSA, I think it's 7880. That's Metropolitan Statistical Area 7880. When New York Times talks about Springfield, they are talking about MSA 7880, that area or Sangamon County. It's not Springfield in itself. So the frustrating part for us is on a couple of fronts. One is the, like you mentioned, the inconsistencies. We still haven't had a clear answer on all the tests. Are they all included? How do you calculate the positivity rate? That's frustrating. And it's just not us. I mean, this is across the state, probably across the country as well, with other mayors as well, because I talked to them. But going back to Menard County, they're on Sunday saying that they're using the carrot approach, encouraging people to wear masks, or encouraging them to do social distance, while their restaurants remain open, their bars maybe are open, I have no idea. But that's their approach. The problem there, well, two things. I have two problems. One is the director, Gail O'Neill, made this statement incorrectly blaming Springfield for the spread in Menard County. It goes both ways. There's no evidence of that. The other thing is, if they're, they should be concerned about it. They should be sending their inspectors, you know, public health county inspectors over to Menard County, just like we do here. And they can be accompanied by law enforcement, since it's out of our jurisdiction, out of Sangamon County Sheriff's jurisdiction. I did call, represent from the governor's office. I asked that the state police step up and do it. And of course, they said, well, they have to receive the request from Sangamon County to make that happen. But the other thing is, if any of you listened to Sam Adonia's show this morning, Dr. Miller, who's been, I thought he's been a great advocate, giving a kind of a broad approach or an explanation of the situation we're in. And one thing he did mention was Quincy. Quincy, Illinois was a hotspot. When we were on the call with the governor's office, and this was with state representatives and mayors in Region 3, when they were saying they're coming down with the mitigation, I think it was mitigation 2 at the time, they said Quincy was a hotspot. Well, lo and behold, someone told me last week that Quincy's wide open, that they're not enforcing. And Dr. Miller's on the radio this morning, saying that their hospital actually has been turning people away because they're maxed out. They're full capacity. So if that's happening, those patients have to go somewhere. And that's the whole problem, is the stress on the hospital system. And I talked about this about three weeks ago, the capacity, you know, the stress on the hospital systems with the nursing staff, we can't thank them enough, with the doctors, everybody trying to do what they can to treat patients. But that's the But that's the stopgap, last stop measure for COVID. Everybody needs to mask up. Everybody needs to keep their social distance. The hospitalizations is the last front. And that's where we're at. And so when we, you know, the restaurants, we all feel the pain, bars, you know, we feel the pain and other businesses, I got called about other businesses, they're feeling the impact now. The problem is, is with the stress on the hospital system. So it's incumbent upon all of us and we could be doing great here in Springfield, but that's not going to matter if people in Chatham, Sherman, Williamsville, Menard, Petersburg, Athens, across the region, across the state, if they're not doing it, it's going to be, it's going to be a rough couple of months. And we're just getting into it. December and January, that's when I expected this to come to this nature. And here we're in November before Thanksgiving and we're already seeing it. So it's incumbent upon us not to blame people, but to encourage people to comply. That's what we need to do as much as possible because that's the only way we get out of it. That's the only way we keep our regional hospital stress system down and make sure we move in that direction. And I've talked to Illinois Municipal League about advocating and moving that direction as much as possible. But that's what it's going to have to take. And, you know, hopefully, with regards to your original question or statement, Alderman Hanauer, Chief Reine had told me, I talked about this to him today. I said, you know, they have 25% capacity limits on stores. Well, in Lowe's, their capacity is 4,000 people. That means 1,000 people could be at Lowe's at 25% capacity. Because they're walking around, keeping social distancing, and they have that large facility where they can do it. And that's the, it's unbelievable. And it's just, but we are going to be checking. But, you know, that's, that's what we're up against. But really, it comes down to all areas, especially if they're, you know, with the restaurants, if that's truly the case, all areas need to comply because our businesses in Springfield are just as important as any others. And that's pretty aggravating when that's not happening.
Madam Chair, may I comment, McMenamin?
Yes.
Thanks for those comments, Mayor Langfelder. And Alderman Hanauer, you raised a good question and issue. We really do want to treat everyone fairly and that's important. And we know that there's more severe impact on the bar and restaurant sector of our, of our economy. And we're hoping that the federal government will come out with additional relief down the road. But let's not ignore the significant differences between the bar and restaurant social activity and the activity in the big box stores. When you go into a bar and restaurant, by definition, you have to take off your mask to drink or to eat. That's a fact. Whereas if you go to Lowe's, you don't, you don't have to take off your mask at any point in time. I think it's also a factor that the main purpose of bars and restaurants is to socialize. And we know that the biggest spread of the virus is through social activity. Whereas the main purpose of going to the hardware store, the grocery store is, is not to socialize, but to buy products which hopefully you need. And then the third factor is that bar and restaurant activity is typically discretionary activity. Whereas much of the activity at the hardware store or the grocery store, as good examples, is not discretionary activity. You need to have food to put on the table or whatever. So we know that the restaurant and bar sectors are getting hurt, heavy hit. That's why, as the city government, the mayor has initiated liquor license relief. I think we've either have or we're considering video gaming fee relief. We've got tonight, we've got from our electric utility, we've got grant programs for electric relief. And we've got these grants out there through the CARES Act that's out there for small business. So we've got to put everything in balance and at the same time, keep our population safe from ever higher spikes in the virus. So it's a balancing act and I think we're all trying to do the best we can under the circumstances.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you. I've, I've had the opportunity going into quite a few stores lately. And, you know, you're right, people have to wear masks. But most of them don't wear them right. And they touch everything on the shelves and nobody's wiping things down. So, you know, you can say what you want. A business is a business. You're affecting, you know, an industry. We're telling them that you can't do it. What's the percentage, the true percentage of people that are positive from the bars and restaurants? I, I've seen in different parts of the country and I got to believe ours is, it's, it's like 4% of the positives come from it. But, you know, my only point is, yeah, everybody, you know, it's discretionary spending at bars and restaurants, but so is Black Friday. So is Black Friday. It's the biggest shopping event in, in the, of the year. Now, I'm not trying to be Bah Humbug, you know, try to be Scrooge or anything like that. But I'm just saying, we got to be consistent on what we do. We've got health, we've got inspectors that are going out and some of these places are getting hit, you know, a couple of times a week. I'm talking about the bars or the restaurants that are currently open. And I don't know that it would be nice on Black Friday that they know that we will be out doing inspections. And if they get, and if, if we see violations, we're going to hit them. But, you know, I, I think that it's, it's easy to pick on one industry. And, and, you know, when you've got other, you know, when you look at it, early on, the big box stores, they're allowed to stay open. But, but the small stores, the boutiques and stuff weren't. What's different? There's no difference. Same, same thing. It's, it's need. So I, I'm sorry, I disagree with you, with your assumption on that. I, I just think that we have to be consistent with our message and I think that we have to, we, we, we need to make sure that they're in compliance, just as any other business that we're, that we're going, you know, we're, we're putting limits on.
I will say that I agree with both of you. This is a huge deal. One of our area hospitals is opening their seventh COVID unit today, seventh. We are running out of beds. We are running out of ventilators here in Springfield. These are our healthcare workers. These are our family members, our, you know, friends and uncles and aunts and cousins and that aren't just working in the hospitals, but are dying in the hospitals. So, you know, we have to get this under control. And we want every business to bounce back from this. But we have to, we have to take the necessary precautions now. So we have people to, you know, shop in these stores and eat in these restaurants and drink in these bars when, when the time is right. But this, this situation here is serious. Memorial Medical Center puts out a chart every day and it's, it's not, the numbers are not going down. It is going up every day and it's scary. And if you talk to healthcare workers and if you know healthcare workers, they are exhausted, they're scared, and they, they don't know what to do. They are begging for people to be cautious, to stay home if you can, and, you know, just to use some common sense. So I think we all need to do that for our community. I don't think we need to argue about what's what. I think everything needs to be enforced. Alderman Hanauer, to your point, I think that we do need to monitor the Black Friday crowds. I completely agree with that. But, you know, we are in a dire situation here. The Midwest in, in general is not doing well. So we've got to turn this around sooner rather than later. Because I don't want to be doing this in six months.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, I, I definitely agree with, with you on, on the seriousness of this. You know, I, I had bumped into a young lady who was, was, you know, working overtime and she, she became very emotional because she was scared. And she's a little younger and, you know, she, she was, you know, more so scared of if she should keep going in or she should quit or, you know, to protect her family. So it was, it was a different conversation and it was a tough conversation with her. So you definitely are correct in, in that on our, you know, hospital workers and, and, and looking out for them. I, I did just want to comment on a few things. I do echo Alderwoman Turner's comments on Old Rochester Road. I know I had some previous conversations with our Public Works Department about a little cul-de-sac that we have at the end of that, that, that road. That is the primary ending place for, for that fly dumping. And, you know, I, I talked with them about, you know, not closing off Old Rochester Road, but the, the small cul-de-sac back there. I know, you know, we'll, we'll be looking into that and seeing what we can do. I think that's one of our, probably our, our top fly dumping areas, you know, from, from, from the looks of things since I've been here. So I, I see you popping in there, Nate. I know you probably want to say something.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and address the fly dumping. We'll get it picked up. And then we're also going to try to be a little bit more proactive and put up some tams as well. So our housing inspectors will prenate that as well.
Can you look at, can you look at the, the, the back of that, the end of that? Where, where that little, it's almost like a roundabout. We, we do have a street there. You know, and I'll talk to you offline about a few things that, that I've observed in the area that, that could probably help us out with fly dumping and that whole area itself. And I appreciate you guys' hard work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My, my second issue.
Go ahead, Don. Go for it, Alderman, I agree.
I'm sorry. My, my issue was just a quick one. It goes back to some landlord issue stuff, some of our residents and citizens. You know, I know we're referring them to Lincolnland legal advice. I would just ask that, that, that we get with them and, and we really go over what they do so before we send residents there to them, to make sure that, that, that we're not just sending, you know, citizens to, to a dead end for their questions and needs. You know, not understanding what, what they fully do. I know they do a lot of things, but some of the things that, that residents are looking for and getting into, unfortunately, you know, they're, they're unable to help with. And then it's back on us to try to find a, a solution for them. And finally, I just want to make one quick comment. I had some calls, I had some emails about a, a gentleman, I guess he sits on one of our commissions, you know, says some, some controversial things, you know, about our governor and, you know, one, one was a guy that lives out in your, your ward, Alderman Hanauer, and, you know, throughout the city, that was of a different race, you know. And, and he took offense to that and, you know, and, you know, as I did my research with some things that, that they sent me, because their whole thing was, you know, how can we have people who say such harsh things or, or, you know, say, you know, young punks should be shot in the back when, when we have incidents in, in other cities or, and so on. And, you know, so I, I did some research. I looked over those things. I was very disturbed at that. So, you know, I, I just wanted to mention that, that, that I thought we had some type of code of ethics on our commissions. I definitely understand that people are free to say what they want on their Facebooks. But I do have concerns when we cross the line and we go into racial situations. For instance, Hitler, you know, was, was part of killing 2 million people, a third of all Jewish people, sort of a stretch to, to call our governor that, I believe, whether you agree with him or not. And, you know, at the very least, you know, I just hope that, that, you know, whoever appointed him speaks to him about, you know, that's maybe a little bit overboard. And, and, and hopefully, his supporters speak with him and, and encourage him to be better than that. You know, we're all frustrated in this time. There's some tough decisions being made. There's some things that, 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 that all of us disagree on, whether they're with our governor, with our president. And, and, you know, I just think that there's a certain level of, of, of respect and dignity that we have to have when we're, when we're representing the city of all people that, 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 you know, makes up for white people, black people, Jewish people. And, and, and we have to be careful with that. So I appreciate you for your time, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Mayor, did you want to respond to that at all?
Yeah, well, we, we've been looking into that and then we'll provide information as it becomes available.
Hello?
Happened again. We lost.
Did we lose them again?
We lost two.
No, we're here.
I don't think so.
No, I don't know.
Yeah, Mayor, you still there? The council chamber still on?
Yeah, we're still here.
Okay.
Yeah, we just said we're looking into that and we'll have an update probably next week.
Okay, thank you. Chief Winslow, you had your hand up?
I do too.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you guys kind of moved on for it, but just to reiterate for everybody, we will have people out on Good, or Black Friday checking for violations. So we won't have a ton, but we'll have some out that we'll be monitoring. We're asking all the businesses to please do their best. Lately, most of them have been. I know today, we've checked over seven big box stores just today on the day shift hours, not counting the additional restaurants and convenience stores, et cetera. But we will be out checking those areas.
Thank you. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Chair. I have two points. First, to the Alderman Hanauer's original point that he brought up. I, I think this is a year where we need to continue to share the message that things are not normal. We're not, we're not following our same traditions. I know, I have so many friends who, I mean, their tradition is to get up at an ungodly hour and go shopping on Black Friday. And they enjoy the crowds. It's, it's, it's not for me. I'm not a crowd person. But I know a lot of people have that tradition. I also have a tradition. You know, we get together, our entire family, all of the kids, grandchildren, we're now at the great grandchildren stage. We get together for Thanksgiving. And, and this year, that's not going to happen. I mean, this is, this is really, it's a once in a century event that we're living through. And it's stressing everyone out. I, I know we're all at the end of our ropes and, and I hate what this is doing to our local economy. I hate what it's doing to our, our neighbors, our friends, our families. But we need to be thinking that this is not the year to do things the way you've always done them. This might be the year that you skip the big box, you know, lining up to get a great deal. And, and, you know, I'd like to encourage people to really look around at our local small businesses. And, and maybe this is the year that we, we really pivot and we, we go to our small businesses and we support those companies that, you know, in different ways. It's, it's not, it's not a pancya. It's not, there's no cure here for everybody. But we have other options. And it is a time that we need to be flexible and we need to accept that it's not going to be the way it always is. We've all gone over so many details about why what's going on. It's just horrible. And we, we understand that. But I guess I'm just hoping that this week, my plea to everybody is be patient, be kind, be a little flexible and, and maybe don't do what you always do. You know, the big family dinners, it's not this year. The big crowds outside the stores, inside the stores, it's not this year. This is just, let's get 2020 out of the way and, and we can look to that in the future. So.
And I can tell you that, you know, the big box stores aren't doing things the way that they are usually doing them either. I'm trying to buy a very sought after item for my son for Christmas and the big box stores are not selling it in their stores. You can only get it online. And if any small business in town had it, I'd be the first in line to go get it there. But it's, it's, you know, so they're, they're adjusting too. They're pivoting too because they don't want a bunch of people in their stores.
Yeah, it's, and I, and I think we just kind of only to acknowledge. And that's the way it's going to be for a little bit longer. I mean, there, there's talk of a vaccine, but for the vaccine to have the broad range protection that we, we are all hoping for, that will take time, you know. And I, I just want to say, I, you know, we, I think we all got the email, but what are you thankful for? I'm thankful that people have been as patient and, and as kind to each other as, as we've seen. I mean, we've seen micro pantries popping up all over our city, all over the county. They're emptied on a regular basis, but they're filled on a regular basis. And, and that's a huge thing. So, you know, we, we need to continue that, that, that theme of kindness and compassion. And, you know, Alderwoman DeSensio, as you pointed out, let's show some of that compassion to our medical workers by not going out as much, being a little more, a lot more aware of where we are, what we're doing. and the fact that asymptomatic spread is very real. We're seeing these numbers, they are not going down. And so we need to be responsible. Alderman Hanauer, I want nothing more than to go out and have a beer with you after a council meeting again. Sit inside and have a drink, you know? But we have to get to that point where it's safe to do it. And I'm just, so just to that point, I'm hoping that people take the time this week to be thoughtful and careful about their choices. I have one other point, but it's more, it does not go along with this theme, so I don't know, Chair, if you'd like to make sure we've exhausted this one.
Go ahead.
Okay, just real quickly, and this is for Corporation Council. I had asked last week for updates on the Washington Street apartments. I still haven't gotten anything. I have a neighborhood that is deeply concerned about the impact of that, I'll call it dilapidated property in their midst. We've had some other issues in that neighborhood. I think this, we're talking about a neighborhood that is, that's getting increasingly stressed. And again, I would like an update on those apartments. I know that they're working through the administrative court process, but this is a problem I inherited. And I've been on council for a year and a half now. And so there needs to be more action. I think the carrots have been out there. I'd like to see that we're getting a stick going, because that neighborhood is really being impacted, and it's not in a positive way. So, you know, I did ask for an update last week. I understand their case was heard. I've not heard anything from anyone illegal, but I would definitely like that update. And I'd like to know that we're going to start taking a little more proactive steps in dealing with those apartments.
Yeah, Madam Chair, may I address that?
Yes, go ahead.
Just very briefly, you'd asked earlier today if I could give you a call, and I apologize for that. I sent an email back saying I could talk tomorrow, just to give you an update. And I'll also put something in writing and send back to Paulie and the other people that sent the email this morning asking about it. And our Bill Basket, I think, was one of the other gentlemen on the email. But the problem, just very briefly, without getting too much in detail, you may recall, that's one that went into, that specific one went into bankruptcy scenario. A buyer bought it, an out-of-state buyer. They came with a plan, you may recall, that had to do with, was contingent on parking, needing additional parking. There was a zoning case in front of the city council that ended up being rejected or set aside. They've been trying to work with SHG to address the parking issue and also the old library building. And we literally have been waiting now for about four and a half months for SHG to respond to the issue. We've talked multiple times with their attorney. The attorney has indicated that COVID has set that situation back. But we're literally waiting on the SHG folks to respond to the agreement regarding the parking so that the buyer, the new owner, can proceed. They've represented to the city on multiple occasions and to, I think, SHG, that they were prepared to go forward with renovations as soon as they could get the parking situation arranged. The problem is, you may recall, that it did not meet the parking requirements for the number of units. And because it was vacant, the grandfather provision under the zoning code kicked in, and it required them to get additional parking. And that's been the holdup the entire time over the last six or eight months after it went through the foreclosure process. You'd also just briefly ask about Old Town. I had sent some information, I think, to Alderman Donnellan a week or two ago. A new buyer, similar situation, bankruptcy. The bank took it over, the bank took possession of it back in March. They ended up putting it up for auction. New York buyer bought it in September, closed about two and a half weeks ago. They have indicated to us that they've set aside between $2 and $2.5 million to upgrade that property. We talked to them as recently as today on the schedule. They've hired an architect, so we should have a little better information, for example, on Old Town, of what the actual schedule would be. But in both instances, you've got situations where you have a bankruptcy, the bank intervening, then a new buyer coming in, and then trying to jump through the hoops on the regulatory side. So I will put together information so that you have that for the Neighborhood Association. But in both instances, it's just gotten out of control because of the bankruptcy and foreclosure process. But the good news is, there's new buyers, and they both have money.
That would be wonderful. And I would certainly like to see a resolution that, I mean, obviously, it needs to work with SHG and their needs also. But again, you know, we're having, we have consistently have, that fencing around those apartments is being cut into, that people accessing the property. We've had other incidents in the neighborhood, and I don't know that they're directly related to those apartments. But I'm worried about the people who live immediately adjacent to these vacant buildings that are rapidly going downhill. And, you know, that we're ensuring that as a city, we're putting the appropriate pressures on people to get a resolution to this issue. I mean, at a certain point, if the parking, I'll do that there. We do, as much as we can, the city needs to be taking some more active steps to ensure that this property is acted on. I'll let Alderman Donnellan speak to Old Town. But for my sakes, Washington Street needs to be addressed. People have been patient and tolerant for a very long time. And thank you, thank you.
Go ahead, Alderman Donnellan.
Thank you, and thank you, Alderman Conley. You know, I'm not one that wants to drag things out here in a meeting, but I think there's a couple of things that are worth mentioning. First of all, I want to thank the Corporation Council for keeping me apprised on what's in the progress that's going on at Old Town. Although I will say that it's obviously not fast enough until things are moving visibly in the right direction. I caution, we need to talk again. I had asked Corporation Council a couple of weeks ago, when we were in session in the council chamber, about the management companies and problems that have occurred in the past. We need to be careful there. But we also need to make sure that the fines that are in place pass on to the new owners, and he assures me that's going to be the case, because we ultimately need it cleaned up. That's needless to say. But I did want to mention one thing regarding the apartments across from SHG. My understanding is, and I'm dangerous when I'm remembering things from months and months ago, let alone the last week, but that there was some type of an agreement in the works between the owner and his attorney and SHG, and that we were at a phase at one point where we were waiting for the owner to initiate, re-initiate the zoning process. And so I would be curious, Corporation Council, on how all that plays together, because I recall Mr. Horstman was, I believe he was SHG's attorney on this. There were some meetings back in the, Alderwoman Conley, back when you first came on board. And it's been a while, obviously. But that's kind of where things, my understanding was where things were. We were waiting for the owner to initiate something, but maybe I'm wrong.
And I think also, there were some questions about some of the finer details of that agreement. And obviously, I'm not party to those on a regular basis. I guess what I'm, my point is, is that, you know, as a city, we certainly want to make sure that whatever steps that we can take to, and when I say encourage, I mean, really support and encourage movement on these kinds of properties, because it stresses an entire neighborhood out to have that kind of, just a rundown, dangerous piece of property, like, you know, right next door to them. It's, we have, these are fine neighborhoods, and we have people who are working very hard to maintain their property. And, you know, to have something like that right next door to you is difficult. And of course, I worry, you know, for the safety of the students that go to SHG. I mean, it's a property that needs to be addressed. And so, again, Corporation Council, I appreciate the update. My point is just that we need to, as a city, use whatever sticks we have at our disposal to encourage things to move along.
I was simply going to add that Alderman Donnellan's recollection is exactly correct. There was an agreement. I've talked to both sets of attorneys and the various parties, the new owner, who's from out-of-state. And presently, the current circumstance is that they're waiting on SHG to respond to their proposal. The proposal had involved them building additional parking lot that SHG could also use. And also, my memory is demolishing the old library building that is no longer in use. I think it's actually boarded up at their expense, which would save SHG the expense of doing that. So there's, right now, the circumstance, there's only two ways that it's going to end up happening is either there's going to be the agreement with SHG, or the owner is going to have to come in and reduce the amount and number of buildings and parking. So one of those two alternatives is what is going to happen. Mr. Horstman actually indicated, as recently as just, I think, right at the end of last week, according to an email that the attorney for the property owner had sent to me, copied me on, indicated that he thought that he would have that agreement within about a week or two. However, that's been said over the last probably 60, probably the last 60 days. So right now, it is on hold. Alderman Donnellan is exactly correct. There was an agreement, but it has not been put in final form. It's what we are advised.
Anyone else?
We'll certainly follow up on that, because it certainly has been a point of some frustration.
Was that unfinished business or new business?
I was still coming under unfinished since I'd asked about it last week, has that. You still have new business.
Any new business?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes. I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
We have free unlimited Zoom for Thanksgiving. And everybody should get their flu shot.
Is there no other new business to be addressed? And we don't have any citizens request to address the committee?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.